I understand Dave's going to do the financials.
I'm going to report on the financials I approved earlier today so that business could proceed, so they're a little, they're a regular set of financials, so there's one more to read here, so bear with me. We had supplemental appropriation transfers, including an appropriation transfer from contingency to the sheriff's office for web check expenses reimbursed and deposited into the general fund, supplemental appropriations for emergency management fund for the transfer of funds for capital improvements in the public assistance fund for anticipated equipment purchases and repayment for security system and AC unit expenditures, cash transfer in the general fund for reimbursement of a portion of 2014 payroll advance and second quarter cost allocations for the transit department. Incumbrances included travel requests for Common Please, ISP Department, the Engineers' Office, and the Department of Water Resources. And highlights amongst the vouchers, payments to Logo's Communication, DBA Black Box Network Services, for next-gen ASA maintenance and services for the ADP Board totaling $24,377.04. That's Cisco Router Maintenance as far as I can tell. Payments to InterSource Corp. for upgrade to BGP, that's Border Gateway Protocol, so that's networking infrastructure, for the ADP Board totaling $16,500. A payment to the Treasurer of the State of Ohio for reimbursement of unused emergency heap funds for Department JFS, the amount of $43,014. And payments to EnviroCom Construction for pay request number 10 for contracts A and B for Department of Water Resources Thompson Township Sewer Project totaling $158,963.50.
I'll just make one brief comment on this financials. I mean, I worked with Heidi and Dave earlier, and you'll be happy to know from a taxpayer perspective, we gave back to the state $43,000 for monies we didn't have to give away, and we didn't, and being socially, fiscally responsible, I think. I don't know if the state looks at it that way, but I like it when we get money back. If we don't have, as long as we're taking care of the needy, and we have money left over weeks in the back, I think that's a cool thing. All right.
Can we do three together?
Let's do that.
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve and execute the minutes for the meeting of May 12, 2015. Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve and execute the minutes for the meeting of May 19, 2015.
I'll make those motions.
Commissioner Veer?
Aye.
Commissioner Spudlai?
Aye.
Okay, as in before, Department of Aging?
I thought someone was coming in.
Yes, I thought so too. Do you want to move on to the Common Please Court?
Once you move on, I will attempt to get ahold of her, Jessica, and see if she's coming.
Okay.
Speak for yourself.
Evening.
How are you guys?
Good to see you.
I won't wake the guy in, but, hi there.
Can you hear me?
We're going to get a loudspeaker. I'm going to get one of those little things to stick in your ear. I'm pretty old now, so I need one of those.
Oh, I used to use these, I can project.
You'll hear.
You'll have no problem.
Like being in church, you know I can turn the thing up. All right, go ahead.
The Court of Common Please is here to request the Board of Commissioners approve Court View Justice Solutions proposal for e-filing, e-services in the amount of $125,694, as in conjunction with the e-filing grant that we received earlier this month.
Congratulations on that.
Thank you.
How does this differ from what we, what you have been doing? Is this all different, or?
This actually makes the entire process of filing a case and follow-up motions and activity from the outside community into the courthouse electronic. So you no longer have to visit the courthouse to file or follow up on a case that you have. It gives outside people a 24/7 ability to not only file, but also to access existing cases and be able to drill down to the document level so that you can pull up a document and literally look at it on our website.
Now, is there controls for, okay.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, but as far as controls, we, we can control what particular dockets and images individuals can and can't see. Specifically, there are some that we will look at, ensuring that are not visible to the general public. And we also are looking at how we're handling deduction.
Okay. Is this something that looks like it has a lifespan? I mean, it's going to go for a period of years, it's not?
As long as we continue with Court View, who is our case management vendor, this will have life, and...
Okay. It's not the flavor of the day.
No.
It has some, some longevity.
It's that long job to do, absolutely.
What's the ongoing maintenance costs associated with this? Have we budgeted for that?
The annual maintenance costs that we're currently paying are $27,000 for our current Court View experience. The first year, which is included in the $125,000, is $39,000 for the e-filing maintenance agreement. I'm not sure that that's going to be a consistent turnover year after year, or if that'll just be in the first year. So we haven't negotiated what second year maintenance agreement's going to look like. So it's approximately $39,000 in the first year incorporated into this.
And generally, that goes down, though.
Right, once you've got implementation, yes.
What was the, what you were using now, or do we have something now that we've been?
Pieces of paper and people walking in the door.
Oh, okay.
Right, so if you're not in the clerk's office by 4:20, you cannot file your case on that day. So we now have the ability to allow you to file, well, we will have the ability to allow you to file a case.
Nice.
Right up to that day.
Well, good luck with that. Have to come over and see it?
It's pretty exciting.
Good.
The Common Please Court, Court Technology is requesting the Board award the competitive seal proposal to Court View Justice Solutions for the electronic filing system e-filing in the amount of $125,694 as they represented the lowest investment proposal.
Make that motion.
Second. Commissioner Veer?
Aye.
Commissioner Spudlai?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, that's your message.
I mean, I know in general, but let's, let's see if she responds.
Johnny, you're up. Hi Johnny.
How are you?
Good, how you doing?
Oh, young lady, how you doing?
Notice he said young.
Young, and to him, you are.
Well, we both had birthdays in the last couple days, but I, I'm...
He's older than you, so.
Yeah.
Are you?
Three years older than you.
Really?
You wouldn't think so.
I'm the oldest one at this table.
It's going to be one of those nights I can see.
Yeah.
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 You ladies love that stuff here, yeah. I'm going to take it out on you, Johnny, go ahead.
This first item is part of the allocation grant, the old four million grant, and now we're going to be putting in two new ADA bathrooms in the Burton American Legion Hall, also increasing the doorway to allow for ADA. And so we're asking for permission now.
The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the Board grant permission to advertise forfeits for the Burton American Legion Hall ADA improvements under grant number B-14-1AB-1 to be held on Wednesday, June 24, 2015 at 2:30 PM. Notice that this bid opening will be advertised on June 4, 2015, and on our website.
Make that motion.
Second. Commissioner Veer?
Aye.
Commissioner Spudlai?
Aye.
The second item is one of our infrastructure revolving loan clients. Ten years ago, we loaned $12,175, and as soon as they received our letter saying your tenure's up for the first one, there was an $11,175, and then there were some changes for an additional $1,000. They sent their check, so it's going back into the fund.
Okay. The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the Board approve and execute the satisfaction of mortgage for John and Bethany Ellis for property located at 106 667 Old State Road, Parkman, under infrastructure revolving loan assistance, as the mortgage in the amount of $11,175 has been satisfied.
Make that motion.
Second. Commissioner Veer?
Aye.
Commissioner Spudlai?
Aye.
So I'll bring the satisfaction of mortgage for the additional $1,000 in September. It will be due in...
Next one.
This is the Community Reinvestment Area Agreement with CNC Precision Machine and General Story, and we're expanding out the country.
Good thing.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. And we basically did, yeah, we're just going to say we're two of them.
We will do eight and eleven together for...
Yeah, I'm doing them personally.
Gotcha. We'll do two and two. The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the Board approve and execute resolution number 15-070, authorizing the execution of the Community Reinvestment Area Agreement between the Jogga County Board of Commissioners and CNC Precision Machine Incorporated. The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the Board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the Community Reinvestment Area Agreement with CNC Precision Machine Incorporated, CNC Holdings LLC, in regards to the Parkman Township Community Reinvestment Area.
Make those motions.
Second. Commissioner Veer?
Aye.
Commissioner Spudlai?
Aye.
The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the Board approve and execute resolution number 15-071, authorizing the execution of the Community Reinvestment Area Agreement between the Jogga County Board of Commissioners and Parkman Properties Number 30 LLC. The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the Board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the Community Reinvestment Area Agreement with Parkman Properties Number 30 LLC, in regards to the Parkman Township Community Reinvestment Area.
Make those motions.
Second. Commissioner Veer?
Aye.
Commissioner Spudlai?
Aye.
Thanks, Johnny. Hey Craig.
Evening, gentlemen. How are you all?
Good. You?
Good, good, good. Happy birthday, I guess we missed a couple of birthdays, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're on the list for that one. I'm used to it by now. So, we're here, I do recall back in the middle of the winter, I came for what was the called, the initial county profiles for what are called Title 20 funds, or social service block grant funds. We had to submit an initial profile with the state, and then we had to conduct a public hearing, which we had back in April, which I, we submitted the minutes to you guys from, and then we took the action to our Family Services Planning Committee, which then came for this recommendation to approve the county profile that we had. We didn't change it from the last one that you guys, the initial profile that you guys approved, and so we're here just asking for you guys to approve that, and for the President to sign the profile so we can submit it to the state, and then we should hear within the next, hopefully, couple of months, you know, the amount that they'll actually allocate us. And these funds are primarily used for our adult protective services, and then also our relationship with the Shreve Falls Community Park, Department of Aging, also used for Women Safe, and they all submitted testimony that, at the public hearing, asking why they need some of these funds to help better the community. So that's what this is for, and we're just to ask if you guys approve that.
The Department of Job and Family Services is requesting the Board approve the recommendation of the Family Services Planning Committee for the proposed social services to be provided using Title 20 funds, and to further approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services Title 20 county profiles for the period October 1st, 2015 through September 30, 2017.
Shall we move?
Second. Commissioner Veer?
Aye.
Commissioner Spudlai?
Aye.
Thank you very much for your support.
Thank you.
Good evening.
You're the positive news, I'm talking to Siddica, moving forward on the community action thing.
Nothing beyond, nothing new today.
No, I talked to her, no, no, I talked to her, Dave and I talked to Siddica White, who's the Division Director, and she gave us approval to move forward, all green light and all the things we talked about the other day.
Yeah, I mean, in terms of like the director, all that, you know, she, they understand it would be a very small part of the, of what we're allocating.
Okay.
So I think that's kind of a reality check that we're looking for.
All right, thanks.
And they were going to extend deadlines and do what they needed to do to help us.
All right, thank you.
We need to get that word passed around, by the way, to elected officials so that they're not considering lifeline at all.
Absolutely, thank you. Appreciate it. Bye, Craig.
Jerry.
Hi, David.
How you doing?
Good evening, Jerry. The first item here is an amendment to the Chester Township 208 parcel at 8279 Mayfield Road. To the best of my determination, when the original Chester Township 208 was put together, that parcel was only 200 feet deep. At some point, that parcel and the parcel behind it were joined, you know, purchased by the same person and joined as one parcel. The 200 feet is only half of, well, the commercially zoned area goes back 500 feet. So this is an agreement with the Tocqueha Chester, with Chester Township, and they agreed that, yeah, the 208 wasn't, was, the original intent was that it was to cover the commercially zoned area, so they agreed to allow that property to be amended and added in the additional 300 feet into the may be sewer, or the existing sewer area. So the property owners, the Cocos, can do their, their building that they're looking to do down there, and they wouldn't have to, and they wouldn't have to put all their sewer facilities in the front 200 feet, they could put it throughout the building.
I see.
The Department of Water Resources is requesting the Board approve the amendment to the Chester Township 208 Waterfalling Management Plan to change the designation of permanent parcel number 11-2427008279 Mayfield Road. This amendment will expand the existing sewer designation of this parcel from the front 200 feet of the parcel to 500 feet back from the center line of Mayfield Road, and will correspond with the township's commercial zoning on the parcel.
Make that motion.
So, second. Commissioner Veer?
Aye.
Commissioner Spudlai?
Aye.
The, the next two items are joined together here. The first one is to remove the maintenance worker that we were advertising for, that advertisement. We originally advertising for a maintenance person to be in our, to be in our water section. We had one of our maintenance, maintenance personnel from the sewer section decide he wanted to go into the water section, so we transferred him into the water section, and we had the opening for a maintenance person, still a maintenance person at the garage, but it was for our sewer side, and one of the, one of our employees from the McFarland Plant, who's the maintenance person down there, decided he wanted to come up to the, to fill that position because he wanted to get off of the night shift down there. And then we had that, we had opening for our night shift position down there, and one of our operators from, the regular operators decided he was, he would like to go night shift because his wife works night shift, and it just would work out better for him, so we're moving him down there. So now we have an operator position open, open at the garage, and that's what we want to advertise for as a...
You're keeping this all straight, right?
Yes.
Because I didn't die, right? But I was, I was thinking about it.
Actually, I have, I have a spreadsheet in our office that outlines the movements of everybody within the department since I started.
Okay, it's like a chess set or something.
Who were playing chess, moving, trying to... Because whenever it comes up, we, the question always comes up, like, well, who, when did that person get hired, and who did they replace? And I was like, you know what, I just put it all together so that it's easy to just pull it up instead of trying to remember from memory, because memory is not always 100%. If it worked for you, it worked for me.
That's good, too. I mean, everybody gets kind of well-rounded as far as experience and knowledge, that's huge.
Exactly, and that's the big thing we're trying to do with, with our department, is make sure that everybody has, you know, the experience, so that as the...
Yeah.
We're starting to get into another, about five years ago, we went through a period where a lot of our employees who've been around for a while started retiring, and we had people who were able to step up into those positions. We're getting into, we're starting to get into another about a five-year period where we're going to have that same thing, where we're going to have guys be able to get to the point where they can retire, whether they're going to do it 30 years or not, but we want to be ready for them when they do, that there's somebody internally who can step up and take their responsibility.
You might be stepping up in a couple months, is that right?
That's the three years decision. That's not my decision. I would be willing to do it if you wanted, if you so choose, but that's...
Well, I know what you're saying, everybody's moving around, I'm thinking you're moving around here probably, pretty quickly, so.
You want to do those together, please? The Department of Water Resources is requesting the Board close the current posting for a full-time maintenance worker number 2330. The Department of Water Resources is requesting the Board grant permission to advertise for the position of plant operator one, number 2326, internally for a period of 10 days in accordance with the union contract. In any event, no qualified candidate is found, the position will be advertised externally until filled.
I'll make those motions.
Second. Commissioner Veer?
Aye.
Commissioner Spudlai?
Aye.
Commissioner Claywell?
Prove. Yes. Bye. Thank you, Jerry.
And just as an aside, on the CNC stuff that you approved earlier, that, that is going into the Parkman Industrial Park, that is, that project has actually spurred us that are to look at extending the sewer for Parkman down to the industrial park.
Oh, cool.
We got a call from his engineer today saying that he got the authorization to start working on plans for doing that.
Oh.
Whether it's, that comes to fruition or not, but that was part of the subject to of the lawsuit from 10, or no, 15 years ago.
Yeah, he sued the county to make sure the capacity would be there for his, his industrial park, and then he never tied in.
Mm-hmm.
So it was built, ended up being larger than was needed, but if he finally ties in, it'll work out.
Good. Now it's not going to work out, because things are asked of this.
That was a good thing that, I think spurred him on to realize that he might get something in his industrial park.
Yeah. So Dave, are we going to hold on to this one, or are you going to...
Well, I can, I can describe, I know, I texted Jessica, called her, didn't get a response back. The Department of Aging has had a senior farmer's market nutrition program for some time. Its goal is to help seniors eat in a healthy way, eat locally grown food. So one of the, one of the parts of that program, the West Reserve Area on Agency, is the agency through which Department on Aging does receive some federal money. That's the, the WRAA is the conduit for federal money. So their, this agreement apparently is for them to participate and help support this program. These coupons are worth $50 each, so a senior that qualifies for this program gets a $50 voucher to be able to buy locally grown food, and their participation, WRAA's participation, in this case appears to be providing for 138 sets of those coupons. So that's what this is about.
And I will just add to that, that on Tuesday, we will see those farm market agreements come through for the local.
Actual agreements where the farmers are participating.
Are slated to come through on Tuesday.
Didn't slash your, didn't you? Yeah, I mean, this, we do this every year, right?
Yep. And it's good, because I mean, it helps the local farmers, too, you know, and it gets them business.
Right.
You know, and it stays, stays here, you know, and it gives people a reason to go to their, their places to do business, so it's good.
So they're, yeah, they're using the coupon, but I'm sure they're spending their own money on top of that, so it's a good thing.
Yep, yep, yep.
The Department of Aging is requesting the Board approve, now I ask the President of the Board to execute the 2015 Senior Farmer's Market Nutrition Program Distribution Agent Agreement between the Western Reserve Area Agency on Aging and the Jogga County Board of Commissioners for the Department of Aging for 138 sets of coupons valued at $6,900.
Shall we move?
Second. Commissioner Veer?
Aye.
Commissioner Spudlai?
Aye.
The last item, I'm going to give you a quick update. I was talking to some folks in here about the community action services situation. I don't know if you're familiar with that, but Blake said in the meeting the other day, starting last year, the state was trying to, well, we got into discussions with our local Community Action Services, Inc. organization. The result of that was, we Jogga County withdrew, there's a little confusion, so on and so forth. I got involved in January when I came on board and kind of did a little homework on this. The result of that is, and by the way, recently, they tried to do an in-run around us and put Lifeline in charge of our funds. We contacted, we ran that up the flagpole to the right level, at the state, and we're back on track. We're going to convert, with your approval, we're going to bring this before the Board, so the Board's in agreement on this, too. But with the Board approval, we'll move to transition the existing organization, Community...
Joga Community Action.
Jogga, Inc., right, to update it to be a 501(c)(3), adhere some, to some other rules and regulations that the federal government has now foisted on us. They want to create a big bureaucracy. We're, we're just in the big bureaucracy part, we're going to adhere to the rules that they're setting up in terms of setting up a paid director and so on and so forth, but I'll be providing more information, and we're pulling the Board together to, next week, to lay out a plan, and you guys will see the plan, so.
Since a couple days ago, the date, you talked to her today, or whatever, what does it look like, our liability, our, our bills are going to be to comply with that? I know it's going to be smaller than originally thought, but how big a network are we going to have to set up? We got to set up a director, and...
Yeah, actually, what she indicated, we, we each do it personally, and Dave was on the call the other day, Siddica White, nice lady. We see things a little differently in terms of what our overall objective happens to be, but she's real good about it. And she was pretty flexible, and she said, we can do what we need to do, realizing that Jogga County, we don't get that much money out of this block grant, we get about $150,000 a year, so hiring a director at $100,000 a year would make absolutely no sense whatsoever. And so she agreed that it'd be okay to hire a part-time guy, we can subcontract our services, all those things that we talked about the other day in the meeting, she was okay with. And her big thing right now is, if we see progress, if we see you guys taking this seriously and moving forward on it, however you decide to do it, we're going to go along with it. But Lifeline has sent a communications to the elected officials within Jogga County, because they want to be the organization to manage our funds. If they manage our funds, it's not likely citizens of Jogga County will see many of them. And so we need to communicate to everybody that you talk to in terms of elected officials to let them know we're back on track, we're going to have an organization, we have to work through some, some of the wrinkles associated with it, but we have an organization today, it just needs to be converted. And they recognize the existing organization as being adequate to handle the existing funds. So we've actually asked them to refund funds that we gave up, so that we can have that money to work with, and so on and so forth. So it sounds like it's going to move in a positive direction. We just need to let the elected officials, which have to approve who handles these funds ultimately, the elect, two-thirds, I think it was two-thirds of the elected officials in Jogga County have to approve this, so we need to reach out to folks. I drafted a communications, which you guys will see shortly.
I can give you a copy of it.
Dave will give you a copy, we don't need to have you read it now, but we want to send that out to all the elected officials in Jogga County, so they're open to speed on what's going on. So I'm telling you this just to make you aware of it, we don't need to get into a whole lot of details tonight. You'll see more probably on Tuesday, and as we, as the plan unfolds.
Yeah, if I could add a little background to that, Skip?
Sure, Brian.
Yeah, I mean, I think what happened in December, the Board, the Community Action, got this letter from the Development Services Agency, this whole laundry list of things they had to do to not be disqualified to be the local Jogga entity, and it looked very daunting, you know? You must hire an executive director, you must have a personnel policy, you must have all these things that just seem to kind of spell bureaucracy. So I think they're, they were very discouraged by that, and when it was brought to Skip's attention when he came on board, he attempted to reach out to state level, and the person he was talking to at the time wasn't, wasn't really being as responsive as we would have hoped, so we weren't sure where this was going to go, but we managed to pull together a meeting of the group, and we kind of went through that laundry list of things and came to this, see that a lot of the things that looked daunting on first blush weren't really that hard to do, a lot of them were things that we already kind of had done, or it was like a framework that we could really appropriate, borrow from some other entity, not have to reinvent the wheel. And then we had the conversation with Siddica White, she had said, in terms of the actual bureaucracy, that they typically expect their entities to spend maybe 10% of what they're provided. Now, if we're only provided $150,000 a year, that means she understands that our goal is to spend less than $15,000 on the bureaucracy, so that really, in a practical sense, precludes us from feeling like we have to hire a full-time director and all this bureaucracy. We have to get it done in a very official way, and I think we can.